Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Special Meeting for today, Monday, February 22, 2016. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Zosotian?
Yes.
Foud?
Here.
Paul Fein?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
President Wu?
Present.
The agenda for February 22, 2016, special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on or before Friday, February 19, 2016. Item two, upcoming council agenda items.
Yes, President Wu, coming up tomorrow night at the city council meeting, February 23, we do have an action item requesting council to reject bids and to authorize staff to negotiate a bid and contract with the three lowest bidders for construction of mechanical systems at the Duke Magin barn, and this is in relationship to the nature educational center and the installation of the flooring, the HVAC, the electrical systems, and the plumbing in order to take the next step, which would be to build out the interior improvements of the barn and adding a restroom building enabled to complete the overall nature educational center of the barn. So that's coming up tomorrow evening as an action item. Then on March 1, we have a consent item requesting approval to award a contract in the amount of $236,000 and a resolution to appropriate additional funds, the amount of $138,000 for the civic auditorium exterior improvements. And if you recall, that project includes a complete exterior painting, adding new awnings at the south entrance of the civic auditorium, demolishing the craftsman-style canopy that is in front of the north entrance, and refurbishing the existing exterior lighting of the auditorium. Then on March 8 and 15, the council is dark. Then on March 22, we anticipate the action item to review and approve the next draft of the Development Impact Fee Fund strategic plan and a second action item to provide direction regarding the 2017 Rose float. That's on March 22. And that's it.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item three, commission and staff comments. At 3A, city council work boot meeting debrief.
Yes, President Wu, I wanted to take this opportunity to report to the commission that we did have a work boot council meeting with the city council. It took place last Tuesday. The purpose for these work boot meetings, which are held once a month, is for the council to gain more insight into the nuts and bolts of the operations of the different departments. And so this past Tuesday was the community services and parks departments turned. We were joined by approximately 15 residents who came on the bus with the council and the staff. We started our tour at Duke Magin Wilderness Park. We went inside the barn, which is currently a shell, and we received a presentation from Mr. Mark Sturtevant on the status of the barn and the proposed improvements to give the council as good an understanding of what they can expect and envision once that project is totally completed. We also talked with the council about the operational structure of the park services section and how we go about what is our approach, what is our strategy for maintaining the parks and all the landscape maintenance and the ball fields and the buildings and community centers. From Duke Magin, we drove to Verdugo Park and talked with the city council about the proposed components of the Verdugo North Mini Master Plan, which is to include demolition of the existing restroom building on the north end of the park to be replaced with a new restroom building and community building. And we also propose to build a new all-inclusive playground in that same area. And we also have an idea to propose council's consideration for converting the existing softball natural turf field with our artificial turf soccer field. And so we took the council to that end of the park and reviewed these ideas with the council at Verdugo Park. Then from Verdugo Park, we drove down to Pacific Park and the community center. We were able to watch one Glendale soccer match in progress, and we toured the community center, and it gave Mr. Bulanek an opportunity to talk about the nuts and bolts of the operation of his section, which is community services and recreation and everything that we do under recreation and what are all of our initiatives in running that operation. And then we also spoke to the council. Teresa Alexanian, our community services manager in charge of administration, talked about our safety and security measures and initiatives such as security cameras, such as the suspension policy. And we also talked about our approach to park planning and development and security measures related to planning parks, such as always starting off with the drive path for the police department and then pretty much designing around that as one of our approaches. And Ms. Alexanian also spoke to the city council about the next draft of our proposed Development Impact Fee strategic plan, which we are sharing with the commission this afternoon and asking the commission to also review and provide feedback. So it was very much a working session. It gives a chance and gave the senior managers a chance to speak directly with the council on how our department operates. Then we got back to City Hall in time for the commissioner reception in the City Hall lobby. So that was last Tuesday. And that's my report.
Sounds like a very productive day there. Any comments from the commissioners? All right, moving on. Next item, please.
Item four, oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there is no debate or decision. The director may refer the matter to the proper section for investigation and report. We do have one speaker card.
So we have one speaker card. Mr. Stephen Weber.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Jess Duran, Kokopanozian. I am Stephen Weber. I have recently been given an appointment to a volunteer position as ambassador for or to Brand Park. I'm not exactly sure what the job entails, other than that I am to talk to the people up there, and I provide frequent reports to Kokopanozian, I'm sure to get to Jess Duran, as well as Bill Donley in the police department and Mark Sturtevant. Just my main reason I'm speaking today is to make my presence and my position aware or make you aware of my position. I've also brought along a typical report that I prepare, and I'm passing this out more to give you an idea of what I prepare and turn in to Mr. Panosian and the others on a fairly frequent basis, at least weekly, sometimes more often. My concern is primarily increasing awareness in here of the needs of Brand Park. And towards that end, I've prepared a little handout here that compares it to the condition of Duke Magin Park. Now, I know funds are limited, manpower is limited, but what I've done with this is to put on the same page, for instance, on the front page, the difference between the entrance to the hiking trails of Duke Magin Park with its concrete block walls, professionally installed handrails and the like, and similar area in Brand Park. This is a picture, if you would, you'll have to take my word for it, is the main trail out of the developed park into the back of the park, the, how do I say "back"? The part that goes up into the Verdugo Hills. At one time, there were some rails with chains. They've been knocked down for several years, and as you can see on the lower part of that first page, that's what it looks like today. It's rather embarrassing when I have visitors come from out of state and even some from foreign countries. We generally like to go for a hike. This place is within two blocks of my home. It's an easy hike to take, but to see it in this condition is rather embarrassing. On a typical weekend day, there's at least 50 people that I see in roughly an hour and a half that I spend hiking on the trails, and on some recent weekends, it's topped 100. These are rough numbers because I just count the people I see as I'm hiking there, and I'm probably missing some, and maybe some get counted twice, but those are fairly good numbers. On one holiday weekend, there was one group of 12, some girls with their mother, another group of college students, I think there's eight or 10 of them. Those are just single groups together. So this park gets extremely heavy use. And I'm just working on making certain that the city and others are aware of its needs. As I said, I'm aware of the financial problems. I'm aware that there aren't going to be any miracles, but I'm troubled, for instance, if you take a look at the very last page, there's a bulletin board, and I, just by bringing this to people's attention, I think something's been done about it. But one of the things that was posted was posted three years ago and hasn't been taken down. This bulletin board is about 25, 30 feet from the superintendent's office. It seems like somebody could take care of it. I talked to Mark Sturven earlier today, and he thinks he's got a plan for that in response to what I've prepared here. And that's mainly why I am addressing you today. I want to heighten awareness of the needs of Brand Park and have oversights like this corrected. One other area that I'm very concerned about is what was once called the Brand Lateral. It was a road you could drive up or you, the city could drive up there. There used to be a water tank up at the top that was set in the ground. It didn't only have water, it probably had mosquitoes. They were able to drive heavy equipment up there in around 2000, 2001 and fill that in and eliminate that hazard. In January 2003, there was a heavy rainstorm. The Brand Lateral was virtually destroyed, in part, I think, because the culverts that directed water underneath it had been filled full of debris, and so it overflowed and wiped that road out. Up until then, it was such a good road, I could ride my mountain bike up it. Now, it's difficult just to hike up it, and the only maintenance that has been done, and this is the reason I'm pointing this out, is in the 13 years since that happened, I have been going up there almost weekly, and I have not seen any work done to correct these problems. So my goal is to heighten awareness and hopefully see more time and effort be put into Brand Park as finances and manpower become available.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure, please.
Mr. Weber, I think one of your points is that somehow attention seems to be lavished on Duke Magin Park, which seems to have maybe less use than a much more closer-in Brand Park. And so one of the questions is why does Duke Magin get all the nice signs and well-maintained trailheads? And Brand Park sort of seems a forgotten cousin. Is that one of your?
That is a concern, and I'm not too sure why, but as you can see from the pictures I have presented here, that does appear to be the case.
And the other thing that strikes me is some of these things you're pointing out, maybe like the trail restoration or replacing signs on a bulletin board, they're not really costly items. They're just sort of, somebody needs to pay attention and maybe do a little, in their routine maintenance, sort of day-to-day or week-to-week, this is something that could have or should have been addressed?
That is definitely the point I'm trying to make, that these things are almost self-evident. A bulletin board should be looked at by somebody responsible for the park periodically, certainly at least once within three years.
Mr. Duran, is there anything that we can, the staff can do to address some of his concerns, or, you know, either now or subsequently and report to the commission?
Yes, President Wu, Commissioner Foud, as in the oral communication, this discussion is limited because it's not agendized. What I can say is obviously Duke Magin is a much newer park, and the trails were built, and the kiosks and other furniture is much newer than at Brand Park. The budget is always an issue. Currently, we have a budget of $5,000 for all trail maintenance for all three of our wilderness parks. We do have a contract, but again, the budget is only $5,000. We do have volunteers that we depend on to do some level of trail maintenance and repair, and yes, right now their focus is Duke Magin. We can give an update on our current trail maintenance strategy at either the next meeting or the meeting after that, and we can provide you with more details. But for now, Mr. Weber's comments are noted.
And I might add, I've commented, for instance, on the handout that was my most recent report about the leaky roofs, but I got an email from Mr. Panosian just today saying that that has already been addressed. So I really feel that they're probably doing as good a job as possible within the constraints of finances and manpower. And so I'm not, by any means, criticizing anybody. I think they're doing a very good job. I just want to heighten awareness.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, if I may, on this topic? Well, first and foremost, thank you for the reports and thank you for your service, but I also use that, the trails that you're actually marking and have shown in your report. It always feels like I'm kind of trespassing when I'm going up that trail because there really is no signage. There's actually two open parts that lead to that trail, and neither one of them, one of them you actually have to kind of climb up and then continue on, but it really feels like you're not supposed to be on that road, but I know it's a trail to be used. When we get the report on this, could we possibly get something that details if there are any plans for signage and improvement specifically for Brand Park in these areas? Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks again. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item five, consent items. There are no items at this time for this specific item. Item six, action items. At A is the citywide healthy snack and beverage vending policy. At A1 is a motion to review and approve the citywide healthy snack and beverage vending policy and recommend the policy to the city council for final approval.
Good afternoon, President Wu, members of the commission. My name is Shay Eklison-Banwar, and I'm with the Public Works Department. I currently oversee the city's vending machine contracts, and I'm here to provide a brief presentation on the proposed healthy snack and beverage vending policy. If at any time through my presentation, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me anytime. Just to give you some background on the current vending situation here in Glendale, we have approximately, actually, we have exactly 50 beverage and snack machines on city property, and they are under a consolidated contract. 22 of those machines are at Parks facilities. The city does receive a commission on all products sold, and that commission is deposited into both the general fund and to a Parks special revenue fund or revenue account. This current contract does have healthy snack and beverage requirements. Specifically, healthy products are required at all locations. There is a healthy vend line for snack machines. You can see those Pop Chips. That's an example of how they're displayed with the green arms and the sticker to show that that particular product meets certain nutritional guidelines. For our snack machines, they're about 40% healthy vending. The police building is not included under this contract. That is a, their vending is handled separately. In addition, soda is limited to 12-ounce cans, and soda sales are restricted at certain The reason why you are considering a healthy vending policy today is because of the obesity Nationally, 17% of children and adolescents, or excuse me, 17% of children and adolescents are considered obese, and nearly 35% of adults. And those statistics, those numbers have been steadily increasing over the past 30 years. Locally, our rates are lower, and the reason obesity is bad is because it contributes to a higher risk of high blood pressure, high LDL cholesterol, type 2 diabetes, coronary heart disease, and stroke.
What are the local rates?
It's coming. I have some statistics for you. So nationally, you can see what the obesity rates are. There are actually only four states with obesity rates lower than California currently. And then here is the prevalence in Los Angeles County. I think this probably answers your question, Commissioner Foud. The first tier with the lowest obesity prevalence are generally those of the cities that are the most affluent in Southern California: Malibu, Santa Monica, La Cuenca, Flint Ridge. Glendale falls pretty solidly in that second tier, along with Burbank and Pasadena. Our rates for adults and children are lower than the county average and Pasadena. For Burbank, our adult rates are lower, but our child rates are higher. As far as a policy, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recommends that in order to prevent obesity communities, or as a measure to prevent obesity, communities improve the availability of healthier food and beverages in public venues and conversely restrict the availability of less healthy food and beverages. The CDC also recommends that communities discourage the consumption of sugar-sweetened beverages. They actually go as far as to recommend restricting 100% juice products. Our recommended policy does not go that far. So what has happened, as far as state legislation is concerned, is that recently, the schools, the K-12 schools have been improving their offerings in cafeteria. So unhealthy options like french fries have been removed from the schools. Now, what they found is that vending machines, once, when they did that, kind of undercut those health benefits. So state legislation was introduced to impose nutritional guidelines on K-12 schools. Specifically, SB 12 applied the standards to snack machines, and SB 965 applied them to beverages. In addition, nationally, the Healthy and Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2012 imposed similar regulations nationwide. The standards for your consideration are based upon the nutritional standards in both of these measures, this legislation. So our healthy vending policy for your consideration would apply to 100% of snacks, 100% of beverages sold in vending machines, and then also there would be the additional requirement that 50% of beverages sold in our machines need to be water. Now, what are those nutritional standards? Here is a brief summary. Snacks shall have no more than 35% of their calories from fats, 10% of calories from saturated fats, 35% sugar by weight, 250 calories per individual item, and 360 milligrams of sodium per serving. Exempt snacks would include nuts, nut butters, seeds, legumes, eggs, cheese, fruit, and vegetables. In addition, trans fats would not be allowed, and vending machines would be required to carry low-sodium items and items with at least 2 grams of dietary fiber. For beverages, beverages would not be allowed to have any caloric or non-caloric sweeteners. 100% juice or juice combined with only water or carbonated water would be allowed. Milk would be allowed, that's 1% or nonfat. Unsweetened non-dairy milk, like soy milk or rice milk, would be allowed. Unsweetened tea would be allowed, and excluded beverages include all regular and diet sodas, sports drinks, vitamin waters, lemonade, and fruit punch. I wanted to highlight briefly the sports drinks and vitamin waters. The SB 965, which I explained previously as applying to schools, does not exclude sports drinks, electrolyte replacement drinks. And locally, the GSD allows those drinks to be sold at the high schools, high school level. So, you know, if there is an option to be more lenient, if that's your direction on sports drinks, there have been a couple bills designed to restrict these at California schools, but neither attempt was successful. So those are currently allowed at our high schools.
When you say excluded, do you mean they can't be sold or are they excluded from the limitations?
The policy for your consideration excludes, currently excludes, sports drinks.
What do you mean by exclude?
They're not, they will not be permitted in, yeah, in our machines. So the next steps, the commission would recommend a policy to the Glendale City Council. The Glendale City Council would then adopt a new policy. That policy would then be incorporated into a new request for proposals the next time the city goes out for proposals for their new vending contract. And then when the existing vending contract expires, after the existing contract expires, a new vending contract would be awarded. And with that, that's my presentation. I am here to answer any questions the commission may have.
Any questions from the commissioner?
I have, I have a couple. How much of this is driven by what the state is now requiring, and how much is just we think it's a good thing to do?
Well, Commissioner Foud, I could kind of give a little background. The city was approached by Glendale Adventist Hospital, who I believe have representatives here today, and it was from their recommendation that this policy is before you today.
So the state isn't requiring us to do anything?
Correct.
Just to be clear, these SB things are just for schools, not for the city?
Right. We use those bills to form our policy. So a lot of the nutritional guidelines are mirrored in the policy before you.
And my other question is, I know when I've heard about this, like in breakfast, you know, school lunches, kids don't tend to eat healthy stuff, unfortunately. Do you have any statistics or experience with, if you stack the machines with healthy stuff, will they still be used? You know, will kids say, oh, this is too healthy, I don't want it? I mean, I don't mean to be facetious, but I'm just sort of, what's your thoughts on that?
Commissioner Foud, my thought is that they're going to be, they're going to be less used, and I think we indicated that in the report. However, that said, if you're asking for specific statistics that say that, I don't have anything to share with you right now.
Okay, no, that's, I wanted you to, that's fine.
Your report notes fiscal impact, but doesn't actually give the numbers. I guess maybe it's similar to the previous question, but do you have numbers on what the fiscal impact would be?
To date, I'm sorry, Commissioner Zosotian, to date, that contract, it's been in place for about eight years. To date, that contract has garnered about $100,000 in revenue for the city. We project that going healthy will reduce that number. I think I also mentioned in the report, well, you know, we're I think I also mentioned in the report, well, you know, we're trying to keep our employees healthy, and there may be some unseen benefits to, you know, insurance costs if our employees were more healthy. But there's a lot of unknowns there, and that would be, to try to give you an exact fiscal impact, an exact amount, is something that I wouldn't be able to do at this point.
Okay, and then in regards to the vitamin waters and the sports drinks, is it because it falls in one of these categories of, you know, calories and sugar and whatnot, or is it just a recommendation of its own?
To be consistent with the policy, it's the sugar that is in that particular product that, you know, we would have a concern with. I mean, I think if you are exercising, like, I mean, I personally drink sports drinks after I exercise as a way to, you know, feel better, replenish the electrolytes. But, you know, you have a lot of kids who are just drinking them because they taste good, not following exercise, and so there may be a benefit to not allow these kids the sugar, which obviously is not a benefit when it's not in conjunction with any physical activity.
Thank you.
Anything else?
All this talk of snacks is me being hungry. I wish you'd bought some healthy snacks. When you said half the liquids sold would be water, by that you mean half the physicians, not that you'll, they have to sell 50%, but 50% of the slots will be for...
Commissioner Fod, yes, that is correct.
And thinking is diet sodas are not much better, are not good enough as opposed to regular sodas for this program?
This, you know, the policy is certainly up to, you know, be modified, but the way it is now being presented to you, it would ban both diet and...
Well, so I'm asking is, are diet sodas considered, you know, bad? Because I would have thought maybe they're better than regular sodas, so therefore maybe they shouldn't be excluded.
I think with diet soda, you know, it's debatable how bad they might be for you, but I would say that they offer very little, if any, health benefits. So that could be something to consider.
Well, I would suggest maybe we shouldn't be concerned, less concerned about health benefit and more concerned about something that's bad. So if something is neutral, like diet soda and maybe sports drinks, I don't know. Without knowing the calorie count, it's hard to make a judgment. I would tend to maybe allow something that isn't positively bad, but if it's neutral, you know, why not, kind of thing.
Commissioner Fod, for the state of California, for the nutritional standards for schools, they do set, even though they allow sports drinks, they do set a nutritional standard for sugar in sports drinks. If we're going, if it's your desire to allow sports drinks, we could always adopt that standard.
So there would be a limitation on the kinds of sports drinks, you're saying, in effect?
Yeah, a limitation on the sugar content.
Anything else?
I have a quick question. You said there's 50 machines located throughout the city. We're not talking about school, we're talking solely city-owned properties?
President Wu, yes, that's correct. We're, this presentation is, or this policy is strictly concerning machines on city property. Schools are handled by the school districts and regulated by existing laws.
So the reason why we are kind of looking at the SBE, I believe you said 695, and then the other one, would kind of give us some sort of guidelines for the vending machines that are located on city-owned properties, not school?
Correct. President Wu, yes, we would adopt the same nutritional guidelines. Those, I think I showed a slide previously of the machines that we currently have in place. Those products that are marked as healthy are following those same guidelines. So once the state adopted those healthy vending guidelines, pretty much any other public agency who wanted to, or adopted something similar, and even the vending machine vendors, they're very familiar with those guidelines, they understand them. And so, you know, that's a reason why we wouldn't want to deviate too much off of what the state is currently doing.
So the school vending machines currently abide by those current SBE regulation, legislation?
Correct.
So you're saying that we should probably be in line with what's presently on vending machines that's on school grounds?
If we're going to adopt healthy vending guidelines for vending machines, those are the least confusing because they're already in place, and, you know, they're already applied for schools. And other public agencies, Pasadena has adopted similar standards. It's kind of become the standard for state of California cities.
Do you know when the GUSD made that transition from previously non-regulated vending machines to health-conscious vending machines?
President Wu, I know that that particular legislation was implemented, was passed in 2005 and implemented in 2007. So 2007 would have been the latest that they would have been able to make that transition. I don't know if they made it earlier, but I'm guessing they probably made it in 2007.
So would GUSD have some data that would show us some fiscal impact from prior to 2007 and then since 2007 until 2015, kind of show us some numbers that we could kind of gauge into?
I just talked to the woman who's in charge of that program over at GUSD this morning. I could probably get some feedback from her as far as how that worked and how the transition was, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Are these guidelines, you say they're baked into the vendors' contracts?
They...
Because you say you can't do the transition till you renew the contract?
Correct.
I mean, does that have to be the case? For instance, supposing we adopted these and somehow something we want to adjust it, we can't tell the vendor, well, we're going to go from this to that because it's somehow their pricing is based on this?
Commissioner Fod, I mean, we could build certain flexibility into the contract to allow us to make minor tweakings of whatever the guidelines are. Or, you know, we could put in there maybe that it would follow the state's guidelines for K-12 schools if we just want to constantly mirror those guidelines.
Well, is their profit based on what they sell? Is that's why it's so important? Because they know food snacks will generate X revenues and that's why they want to put it in the contract? Is it that sensitive? Rather than just saying, here's a vending machine, fill it?
I'm sorry, I'm confused by the...
Well, you're saying the contracts actually specify what to put in the vending machines?
Our existing contract does not specify what to put in the vending machines other than that there's a requirement for there to be at least one healthy item in each of the vending machines.
I'm getting it. Could you not write the contract where they have to meet what we say, what you say, what the policy is, but if later we want to change it during the contract year or term, the city could do that?
I believe we could probably put some flexibility for the city along those lines, some limited flexibility.
All right, thank you.
I have one more question.
Sure.
You, this is a contract that is applied to all of the vending machines. Is there a way that we can provide a distinction, for example, of vending machines at the sports complex where you would have active play, where the issue of sports drinks might be more acceptable versus a vending machine here at City Hall where you aren't going to have athletic performance or play? Keeping the policy consistent?
Commissioner Michael, certainly. I mean, we could have different standards for athletic facilities, we could have different standards for employee-only facilities. That's certainly something that could be part of the policy.
I think city officials should have the most stringent policy. Joking.
I'm for healthy eating and healthy living, but have you, can we do a research of what the demand is on those machines for our customers, the machine customers? Is there a research that will be acceptable, such a thing?
Commissioner Kofalian, I could touch base with the vendor and, you know, see what kind of records he has and try to get as much feedback as possible. But I would only have access to the data that he has for our city facilities. So it would, I'm just imagining that it's probably going to be somewhat limited, the feedback that I would be able to get from him.
My concern is the demand. If they put something, that no one will take it, so it's no use to have a vending machine in there if no one is accepting it.
Mr. Duran?
Yes, President Wu, commission members, someone asked earlier if we're doing this just because it's the right thing to do. And as a community services and parks department, promoting healthy, living nutritional awareness would be very consistent with the mission of our department. I think the other reality is, in terms of the market analysis, and will persons go to the vending machines and use the products or take the projects at the same rate as they currently do? Probably not, or it will take time for the users and patrons to adjust to this type of healthy living. But I think it's something that is worth this department promoting, at least in our facilities. Those athletes that are playing baseball and soccer at the fields are likely to bring their own drinks in their duffel bags if they don't like drinking water or liquids with very low or no sugar content, so there's still that option. I think the other reality is that half the time is the spectators that are going to the vending machines while they're watching the game, eating the chips and the soft drinks more than the players. But I think it's very much in line with the current trend and the bandwagon that we need to jump on to promote healthier living in our facilities for our residents.
I agree. Thank you, sir. I do have one speaker card, Mr. Eric Corillo.
President Wu, just for timing, three or five minutes, so I could set the timer.
Three minutes, please. Thank you.
President Wu, members of the commission, thank you for having us. My name is Eric Corillo. I'm part of Glendale Adventist Medical Center, and I just want to briefly mention that this was a joint effort, not just by us, Glendale Adventist Medical Center, but also a group of Glendale parents known as the Healthy Kids, Healthy Lives Parent Collaborative. And they were the ones who brought up this issue to us about the vending machines. So each of you have a packet, and you gave me, if you look on the right side, we actually took a survey of Glendale residents. So we actually had 400 Glendale residents respond to our survey, and overwhelmingly they responded that they would support and purchase healthier snack and beverage options in Glendale Parks and Recreation vending machines. So the statistics are there to support policies such as this. So if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them. And as well, we also have, you can see that the Parent Collaborative is also involved in many healthy efforts throughout the city. We also have pictures of them throughout different events, city events as well. So like I say, if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them.
How was the survey conducted?
Yes, so the survey was conducted by our staff members as well as with members of the Parent Collaborative. So we went to, basically we just hit the pavement, we asked Glendale residents. We actually took more than 400 surveys, but we kind of broke it down because one of the questions we asked was, do they use vending machines or do they use, do they use Parks and Recreation facilities? Because since this policy is mainly applied to Parks and Recreation facilities. So we went to different events, you know, we went to parks mainly, we went to, over the summer, they had the summer concert series, we went to that as well. We went to, you know, car washes, areas around like the Americana, places like that. So just make sure we had Glendale residents.
So it was covered throughout the...
Yes, so we have all demographics from senior citizens to young adults to pretty much parents as well.
Was it only conducted in English?
So we did it in English, Spanish, and we also had someone as well who spoke Armenian with us, so it was conducted in three different languages.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Corillo? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Any comments or suggestions from the commission?
I have a couple.
Sure, thanks.
Not in relation to the speaker, but in regards to the item. I'd like to see some additional data before we vote on this, possibly if we can get the information from GUSD and what their fiscal impact is. I'm all for, you know, healthy snacks and living, but I also see the vending machines as basically city-owned stores that are throughout our city that bring in funds. So I understand that people can still go purchase them at the stores. I'm okay with most of the items on here, but I just, I just want to make sure that we have all the information before we move, if that's possible.
My only thought would be just allow the contract to be flexible enough to change the mix, you know, any way the city wants.
Mr. Michaels?
The fiscal, the financial concerns are there. There's little point in having vending machines where we're not going to get that much patronage. So that's where the question of a sports field to sell sports drinks, even if athletes typically bring their own, that would be a venue where sports drinks would be sold as opposed to other venues. So I want to try and find some balance between actually having vending machines that are used versus having them remain healthy.
Mr. Kofalian?
Fine, he told them.
Okay. So if I'm not mistaken, I think the commission's basically is on board with the healthy vending machine options. I think they are requesting some data and then some flexibility within the verbiage of the potential ordinance and upcoming contracts with our prospective vendors. So would this be something that the staff be able to come back to the commission and give us some data to kind of be able to further our conversation at a later time, or is this something that's time-sensitive at this point?
President Wu, is the idea that depending on what additional data shows, the commission is in favor of approving the vending machine policy or irrespective of the data the commission is comfortable with, the new vending machine policy for healthier products?
I personally am less concerned about sales. I think the assumption is sales will go down, and I think healthy stuff trumps any fiscal distress or reduction. That's my opinion. So I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't see the need for future studies, but, you know, my commissioners may feel differently.
To answer that, Mr. Duran, I think the consensus of the commission is that we are on board with the healthy vending options. I just think that they would like to see if we could make a decision that has pertinent information and data, so we'll be able to make a decision based on that and making sure that it's going to have a very minimal fiscal impact, if any, and also being able to offer our patrons, our customers, our residents, the options that they so desire. Because if we are leaning towards healthy eating, and I don't think anyone's against that, I just want to make sure that we have all the viable data so we can make the best decision moving forth.
I'd like to add one more thing. I know the, you know, for example, the report that we're going to get from GUSD, I mean, the clientele there is basically students and underage patrons. So I don't know if we have any numbers on the age groups that use the parks and the services and the vending machines currently, but I think that would be an additional information that I'd like to see in the report. So, you know, it comes back with, you know, most of them are youth, then I think we can look at the guidelines a little differently.
I mean, with all due respect, I think that's going to be very difficult for the staff to generate a report that would kind of give us a breakdown into the age as to who is utilizing the vending machines, especially on the off-campus school, you know, on the city-owned property.
Not specifically for the vending machines, but just parks in general. So, you know, I don't know if you guys have any numbers, but...
You're asking for an age by age?
No, no, not like, you know, 25-year-olds, but just overall, general numbers.
I just want to understand, does it sort of match the GUSD population?
Right, right.
President Wu, we can try to come up with something. You know, for example, the sports complex, how many vending machines do we have at the sports complex?
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Golia, the Community Services Supervisor at the sports complex. Mr. Duran, we have three vending machines at the sports complex. One is a snack machine, one is a mixed drink machine, which is adjacent to our snack bar. And then the machine that's over by our soccer fields only serves water already. We don't allow any kind of sports drinks or sodas or anything except water onto our soccer fields. So all of our participants at the soccer fields, which is our biggest vending machine clients at the sports complex, are only purchasing water at this point in time already.
You raised something I was thinking about. Are snack bars going to be subject to this policy?
No.
So that's sort of, that's sort of a huge loophole. I would, can't get a machine, but you can get your sugary drink from the guy.
Yeah, at the Glendale Sports Complex.
Is there some thought of changing that? We had not thought that far ahead. And again, it doesn't preclude people from bringing their own soft drinks, even if we had that. We can't search trunks. That's something that we would have to work through with the snack bar operators and vendors. Right now, what is under our control are the vending machines and what we allow to go in the vending machines. So for example, the users at the sports complex run the gamut from youth to adults, a lot of adult leagues. And so, yeah, this policy would apply to the adults as well. And so they would be, they would be forced that while they are at our facilities and they want to use a vending machine, they're going to have very limited selection unless they want to bring their own drinks. What percentage would be youth versus adults at the sports complex?
Off the top of my head, it's probably, and again, this is a guess, I could get a much more accurate number, but I would guess it's probably at least 65% adults and 35% youth, just based on the amount. We have three softball fields up there, which are primarily adult leagues that are run on those. And the soccer fields are mostly the split use between youth and adults. And again, the soccer players don't tend to come all the way over to the vending machines that are adjacent to the snack bar. They tend to only utilize the vending machines that have water in them at this point in time. So this policy really wouldn't be affecting that vending machine at all. And I can say from our experience that the water is the item that is gone most of the time, that we're constantly calling the vendor and saying, please come refill our waters, even though it's ahead of schedule. So most of the people at the sports complex purchase waters from our vending machines, and I believe they're probably getting their sports drinks or their sodas from the snack bar in the evenings.
Then we have the skate park, we have one vending machine there.
I believe there are two located in Verdugo Park.
Okay, two in Verdugo Park.
One at the skate park and one at Stengel Field.
We have water fountains at the sport, and they don't use it, they purchase the water?
They do prefer the cold water, Commissioner Kofian, and the machine does put out nice refrigerated water versus the water fountain, which in a hot day, the water is lukewarm.
Then we have vending machines in all of our community centers, all four of our community centers? More than one or typically one?
Typically, typically one. Pacific, we have three. We have two vending machines and a snack machine.
And most of the users there would be youth?
Youth. At Pacific, there'll be mostly youth.
Okay. So it pretty much runs the gamut at our community centers versus is it all mainly adults or mainly youth? It's both?
When do you need to take this recommendation to the council?
Shay, what's the plan?
Commissioner Kofian, the plan was to go to council in March. You know, we could certainly change that schedule and return to this commission in March.
So we don't have to, we're not urged to vote today? We're not, we don't have to.
And being that it says in the report that the current contracts, they run through April 2018, so even if we were to take this to council, it's pretty much going to be sitting idle until the new contracts are out for RFP anyway, correct?
President Wu, yes, that's correct.
And does that have to be the case? I mean, these contracts are so written in such a way that you cannot even, because it'll hurt the vendor? I mean, they can't be, it seems like something that could be talked out or renegotiated if, I don't know, unless there's a huge fiscal impact.
Commissioner Fad, we looked at a lot of different examples of other policies, and for even cities that went further than the recommended policy before you today, they still put in that provision to retain the existing contract. I think for, because it would change the contract so substantially, we need to wait for it to expire before these changes are.
So it is considered a substantial change?
I would say so, yes.
Just to quickly piggyback off of what Commissioner Fad said, so have we considered running this by the current vendors to see if they will be resisting it or if they'll be embracing it? Or have we had that conversation? Or are we just basically just kind of taking a stab at thinking that that's?
President Wu, I have had that conversation, and he is interested in maintaining his final two years under the current standards.
Thank you.
President Wu, just to be clear, if I can have the commissioners indicate one more time exactly what information or what data they would like us to try to gather and come back with?
I was looking at the reports from fiscal impact from GUSD, and then if there are any other cities that have implemented similar policies that we can use as an example, that would be great as well. And my understanding was that you guys didn't have any age breakdown of parks and recuse, so that would be out.
Okay, well, what we can do is we can come back and give you a list of these specific locations where we have all of our vending machines, and that'll give you an idea of who the users are and who's.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Fad?
No.
And I think what Commissioner Michaels was saying was that he would like to have a verbiage where it's site-specific, so.
Well, that was one issue as far as having the vending machines be used, but with this, if the contract is going to remain the same, making changes now, the policy wouldn't take effect until the contract changes again. I'd like to go ahead and see if we could get a proposal based on the current healthy standards of how that would change the vendor's contract of what he would want to negotiate. That would do more to figure out the fiscal impacts than guessing what has happened in the past, because we're going to be making a change, and it's going to primarily be the vendor's contract that's going to address that.
Commissioner Michaels, just to clarify, when we go, when we issue a RFP in two years, it's going to be an open process that any vendor will be able to apply for. And I've actually already received numerous inquiries regarding this contract. There's a lot of interest out there. Now, I don't know how much interest there's going to be with healthy vending. You know, it may bring in a whole new crop of vendors and exclude a certain number as well. But, you know, the existing vendor has certainly no guarantee that it's going to be awarded to him in two years when his contract expires.
I understand that. I'm just looking to see if we propose and do diligence beforehand to say we are going to go with these standards as they stand and ask for just an estimate, not a formal RFP, but a measure of interest to give us some direction of what some of the contracts may look like in two years.
I could certainly ask him, you know, I can't hold him to it, but I can ask him if he envisions that he will be able to, if he gets the new contract, if he would be able to continue the same commission rates that the city has enjoyed up until now. I think it would be more a matter, I think he probably would, it would be more a matter of the sales quantity going down.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Duran, so at the present time, is this something that we could revisit at a later?
President Wu, so I guess the commission would be approving a motion to return back to commission next month with the information requested?
Would that be ample time for the staff to gather all the information that was requested by the commission?
Yeah. Okay, Shay's saying he can do that.
So then we will have the item back on the agenda for next month's meeting.
Can somebody move and second, and I'll take roll call?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Commissioners Asatrian?
Yes.
Fad?
Yes.
Kofian?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
President Wu?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, please.
At B is DIF Strategic Plan Draft Number Two. At 1A is a motion to review and provide feedback on the second draft of the DIF Strategic Plan. President Wu, members of the commission, before you is a report on the second draft of the DIF Strategic Plan. As staff had presented to the commission on November 21st, an initial draft of the strategic plan for commission review and feedback. After a lengthy discussion and question-and-answer period, commission supported the staff recommendations for the strategies and projects identified in Tier One, but recommended that Tier Two projects be comprised of one project for land acquisition and development of a brand-new park in South or Central Glendale instead of the Tier Two projects recommended by staff. On December 8th, we presented a report to city council on the same proposed strategic plan, and the feedback received from the commission was incorporated in that report. Council reviewed the plan, and each council member shared their thoughts on the individual projects identified in the strategic plan. They directed staff to return with a revised draft and more details on certain projects. Majority of the council did not favor using any of the funds on projects in North Glendale and wanted to invest the funds in projects in Central and South Glendale, since it was developments in Central and South Glendale that were paying the fees. Based on council feedback and as part of the next proposed draft, staff evaluated the strategy and has prepared a second draft as identified in the report in front of you. I'll take a few minutes to kind of walk us through the various projects that were identified and the costs associated with each of those projects. The amenities at existing parks identified playground replacements and, or not replacements, but these would be considered because it would be an all-inclusive playground. So at Verdugo Park, north end of the park, an all-inclusive playground, and the cost for such a playground is approximately $825,000. And the same thing is being proposed at Maple Park, again, an all-inclusive playground. We know the park was recently renovated, but the playground component was not included in the renovation plan. So this would, we wouldn't be replacing the playground again. The playground was not replaced as part of the original project. As part of a mini master plan at Verdugo North, Verdugo Park, we're also proposing a community building and restroom. So this would be combined with the all-inclusive playground, and this is approximately $1.5 million. We're actually proposing to appropriate an additional $1.5 million for this project. And again, it would be done together with the playground at that park. Couple of shade structures, we know that, we've heard from the community and a lot of our council members about shade at Maple Park and Maryland Park. So at Maple Park, we're proposing three, at three different picnic areas, shade structures, and these would be like the ones we have potentially, the ones that we have over our picnic shelters at Pacific Community Center. And so these shade structures are looking at total approximate cost of $174,000. And then at Maryland Avenue Park over the playground, the playground right now does not have shade, and so in the summer it gets really warm, it gets really hot. And so a shade structure over Maryland Avenue Park's playground, and that's approximately For multi-use courts, we are proposing to add lights on the basketball court at Pacific Community Center. Right now, the basketball courts are not lit, but they are being used for pickleball. And so this would be, by adding lights, we would be able to expand the pickleball use into the evenings. And so the lights would allow us to use the courts for, again, they're being used now during the day, but also allowing pickleball to be played in the evenings. Also restriping the basketball courts at Griffith Manor to allow for pickleball, and that's only a $1,500 cost, it's minimal. And also at Glen Oaks Park, restriping the tennis courts for pickleball play. The next project that we're proposing is the outdoor fitness equipment. And for $174,000, we're looking to add four to six pieces of exercise equipment at Carr Park. There's currently a concrete slab there that originally was intended for basketball, but right now there are no basketball courts, and so that would be a great way to use the area there to add some exercise equipment to allow the users of that park to be able to exercise. Also a restroom at Wilson Mini Park, which is approximately $342,000. We know that our mini parks currently don't have restrooms, but this is a park that is really heavily used, and we heard from our council members that this is something that they would really like to see, a restroom at Wilson Mini, at Wilson Mini Park. Also adding $2 million to the Fremont Park renovation project. As we mentioned last time, this is a park that's currently, we have a master plan that was recently approved to renovate Fremont Park, and adding another $2 million in development impact fee funds, because that master plan has a lot of new components, new amenities that would be added at that park. So adding $2 million to be able to fund more of that project. And soccer fields, multi-soccer fields, with partnership with GUSD, we're looking at adding a soccer field at the school site, and that's looking at approximately $4.3 million. And Columbus could be one of the options, Columbus Elementary School. And then another option would be Wilson Middle School. And also potentially converting the softball field at Verdugo Park into artificial turf and using it for soccer, and that would be approximately a $2 million project if we were to be able to convert the softball field to artificial turf for soccer. And then $2 million to master plan and develop Central Park. And the funds that would be available would be saved to add on to as more development impact fee funds become available or other funding sources to be able to expand existing parks. So it would mean land acquisition to be able to develop, to expand an existing park. So this concludes my report. This would be the second draft of the strategic plan that would be proposed to council. The report's before you for review and feedback. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a couple of questions and comments. Is the, is the last item, the $1.2 million, is that, in essence, a miscellaneous bucket for miscellaneous things?
The $1.2?
Yeah, the last item on it, expanding, that's sort of a miscellaneous, things come up, or as you identify things, it's money for that?
No, the funds would be for expanding existing parks, so to be able to save the money, to be able to add funds, to at some point be able to acquire property to expand.
Yeah, to an adjacent park or just in general, anywhere?
An existing park, so it would be any of our Glendale parks. So if we were to find property at close to or adjacent to, I should say, any of our existing parks to be able to acquire.
Why the differentiation between that and, you know, acquiring a central park? I guess this is something you just, you want to make sure has a different allocation.
First, President Wu, Commissioner Fad, we currently own Central Park, so to be able to master plan and develop Central Park, so we already own the park. It's the one, the green space next to Adult Recreation Center. So with Central Park, we would not be acquiring property.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I meant the park. This constitutes a new park in Central Glendale, right? Or is that the same, or is that the Central Park thing? That's one and the same?
So the master?
It said add active park in Central Glendale. Is that the same thing as master plan and develop Central Park? Is that one and the same?
Yes, that's one and the same. It's a sub- It's a subcategory of add active park in Central Glendale.
Because we had talked about, and maybe the council didn't endorse it, of acquiring a new park in Central Glendale, like, you know, west of the Galleria area. Is that not in here?
No.
Right now, Commissioner Fad, right now, it's not, it's not identified to purchase property to acquire, to purchase property to build a new park. It's identified as using the 1.2 million and saving up for, to be able to expand an existing park.
Did council have a view on that when they looked at this? The council looked at this, right, the first draft?
Correct.
And did they, did they have a view on that notion?
President Wu, Commissioner Fad, the city council has not reviewed the second draft.
Right.
Yeah, the second draft is based on feedback we got after reviewing the first draft.
Did they, I'm so sorry, did they have comments from our first draft that asked to purchase new property to save money? Because that was our recommendation, so was the city council against that? And that's why we've come back to existing parks on the second draft?
Essentially, yes. In my mind, the net gain is the same. For example, if we were to acquire two lots or three lots adjacent to Maple Park, then we're adding that as new recreation open space in Southern Glendale. If we purchase a, three new lots that are not next to a park, again, we still added that much open space and recreation space. So the net gain would be the same.
But you've limited it to expanding existing parks. Wouldn't it make sense to make it a little more flexible, and you can do either add to an existing park or buy a lot for a new park?
It would be more flexible, yes.
Is that adverse to what the council said, or is that, would that be consistent with?
I'm, I'm not sure if that would be considered inconsistent or, or in line. If that's, if that's the feedback that the commission would like to relay to the council, we can certainly incorporate that in the report.
I think our sense is we would, yeah.
Okay.
And I just have a few more things. Is this, can this land, can this money be used for trees and landscaping? For new trees, new landscaping?
Commissioner Fad, I don't think it could be used for new trees, it's for new amenities or park space, so I don't believe trees are considered amenities as part of the ordinance.
Okay, and the turf replacement at Verdugo Park, 2 million, that's a big number. Is that a nice-to-have or an absolutely essential thing? Seems like a lot of money for something, I mean, hopefully it's really needed, because that's a nice chunk of change that could be used for land acquisition.
Yes, Commissioner Fad, that would include fencing and lighting.
So is that, there's a thought that that's really needed? I mean, that's actually the biggest thing on this list, is that. So hopefully it's to be a prime importance.
Well, one of the things that we hear over and over again is the need for more soccer fields, that there's a huge, there's a huge demand for soccer, more soccer play in our community. In our, in a community this size, we only have three officially designated soccer fields, to the sports complex and Pacific Park. So the goal here is to, is to begin to add more soccer fields. And in our judgment, Verdugo Park would lend itself to adding a soccer field if that's something that the city council ultimately wants to do. Now, it would certainly change the character of the park, and that's something that's going to have to be weighed. But if, if we want to add soccer fields in this community, we think that's a potential place to add one.
And my final comment is?
Commissioner Fad, I'm so sorry not to interrupt, but I'd just like to call into that President Wu had to leave, so President Protem, Calfion will proceed with the meeting. Just for the record.
Thank you. And my final thing is, especially in light of Mr. Weber's presentation, were there any projects at Brandt Park that were identified in your, in your initial survey that could be a benefit, benefit from these funds? He was talking about, well, the trail, that's maintenance. I think mostly what he was talking about was maintenance, not capital improvements.
Correct.
Is there anything there that was identified that's not in the program? Because some of the other things are pretty specific to other parks.
Commissioner Fad, as it relates to this increment of $16 million, no, there was nothing that has been recommended for Brandt Park. Now, we are using, we are using $500,000 in development impact fees, a fund for the Brandt Park lighting, and the Brandt Park wayfinding as well, or just the lighting?
I believe wayfinding is also funded by DIF fees.
All right, so we are using development impact fee funds to replace the lighting system at Brandt Park and to replace the signage at Brandt Park. And one of the things I'm going to check on, Commissioner Asatrian, is whether those new signs include the trailheads or not. That's not the same thing as signs on trails, but it might include the trailhead, so we'll report that back next month. So we have invested development impact fee funds at Brandt Park, and the next, as we made there, is Brandt Park is a regional park, which means that it benefits all residents, including all the new residents moving into the new units that are being built. So, so that's how we're able to qualify Brandt Park, but no new projects as part of this $16 million were identified for Brandt Park.
Was that to go in line with the city council's request not to have any of this be on the north side of Glendale, or?
Yes, in terms of the new $16 million, the city council has expressed that they would much prefer that all of the new projects that are on this draft be targeted to Central
So could we make recommendations on the budget now, or? I think you had some comments. I was thinking that maybe we can take this expand existing parks acquisitions and development line, move it under the add active park in Central Glendale as a second line item, remove the expand existing parks, just put acquisitions and development, and put the amount under that category?
I'm not sure I'd put it under Central Glendale.
Or I was going to add?
Just make it a separate parks acquisition.
Okay.
Without existing, I think is what you're saying.
That would work, yeah.
So add new active park in Central Glendale, and then we can keep acquisitions and development.
We can say South or Central Glendale.
I think not to interrupt, but maybe sort of leave it where it is on your line item, but just say land acquisition and development for new and expanded parks. Is that what you had in mind? And therefore it can be?
How much?
Well, I guess it'd be the 1.2 million, the same number, but it could be used for new land acquisition or add-on.
New or expanded.
Yeah, and presumably it would be in the southern parts of the city, but I don't think we need to do that since that seems to be implicit.
Got it.
I have a question about estimates that we have here. Are those realistic estimates, or they're just close estimates?
Commissioner Calfion, these are the best estimates that we have at this time. We did receive review and assistance from the project managers, who have a lot of experience in park development, and these are the best estimates that we could come up at this time. And these costs include all the soft costs as well, which is design, engineering, permits, those kinds of things.
They discussed Verdugo Park conversion to 2 million, and then my other question is the Columbus, $4,300,000. Is that something that existing, we're converting, we're not paying for the land, right? We're not buying any land, we're just converting. Is that costly, that much?
Again, this estimate includes new lighting, it includes a new restroom building, it includes, oh, yeah, and it includes parking improvements.
My suggestion would be let's try to cut as much as we can from different areas without touching them, that's fine, but let's leave some more space for land acquisition, because 1.2 million, you cannot buy anything right now, except next door to Maple Park or so on.
And I agree with that.
If I can make one comment related to that. Our estimate for the $16 million is the amount of funds that will be collected at the end of this fiscal year, which means June 30th. So right now, absent anything else, this recommendation suggests that any new money after July 1, 2016, and in the ensuing years, would be deposited into the
Acquisition?
Land acquisition and development for newer expanded park project category.
How much would that be?
So in that sense, it is more of a catch-all miscellaneous project account. That's where all the new money would go in, presuming that we are, that we have, that we have budgeted enough, as we're proposing here, in all of these projects that are part of the strategic plan.
If we can save like 1 to 2 million and add it in here, then we'll have more realistic reserves somewhere.
Can I?
If the opportunity comes in, yeah.
Actually, I mean, you just made, I mean, you're very specific on the items listed in the beginning of the draft, but you just mentioned restrooms and parking and so forth for, for example, for the GUSD soccer field. So it's not just going to a soccer field, it's going to what other items are included in that? Because when I read this, I'm thinking, okay, we're spending 4.3 million just on a soccer field. So within these line items, if there are things like parking lots and restrooms, can you identify them so we know exactly what we're requesting?
And maybe there's room to take a haircut and sell those additional items.
Yes.
You don't know without seeing the bracket.
Okay.
And this notion about it sort of being it's going to catch everything after the June, you might want to mention that here, because that's not, that's not apparent to me anyway. This is the fill-up-the-bucket thing going forward. And I, just one final thing, and in our council commissioners' reception the other day, we were talking about maybe an art component to some of these projects. Now, we don't want to, you know, burden projects with an expensive piece of art, but maybe there's something modest that can be done. And, you know, my thought was, even in the so-called utilitarian things, lights, playground equipment, fencing, rails, you can make those very distinctive and very, and bike racks. I mean, we've seen a lot of bike rack, you know, art. If we can add an art component, if not a standalone sculpture or, you know, something, but then incorporate it into some of these more structures that we're building, it can be a little more, you know, compelling. A restroom can, with a little bit, maybe it can be just a little more interesting than just a center block box.
Okay.
More creative.
We can, as we hire designers to develop the designs, we can include a goal for some type of a public art component.
What I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not just fix on standalone, because sometimes those things are just sort of tucked, useless. But if it can be in the actual, integral in the thing.
Incorporated, incorporated in something that's functional, has a functional use.
You know, the new Gold Line stations are fall-up design work for very functional items, so something included.
Yeah, and that would be our preference as well versus a standalone, because it's a lot easier to maintain it if it were standalone.
Is there also an opportunity to share this in that manner with the Arts Commission? That was also a discussion we had at the appreciations, that we somehow need to inform them of these new things that are happening, so as they are building projects, they're aware of opportunities that they can utilize.
Yeah, we can do joint reports.
Okay, so let's move the motion with all the conditions that we have.
Do you have what you need, Mr. Duran?
I do, Commissioner Fad. So the, the motion could be to approve the plan as submitted by staff, recommendation for approval to the city council with the modification that under, well, with modification to change the project title, expand existing parks, to change it to land and acquisition, land acquisition and development for new or expanded parks. And that that's where the 1.288 would go, and with a footnote that all accumulation of future DIF funds would be appropriated to this project as well.
Sorry to interrupt.
And the breakout of the other items?
I was hoping I'm?
And to specify the scope of work for the GUSD soccer field projects, so that there's full disclosure that those soccer fields include lighting and parking and the other components.
So that was one example that came out of conversation with staff. So are there other items on, you know, for example, under Verdugo Park, is it, is it really just a conversion from softball field to artificial turf? Or are there additional items that come up to that 2 million, for example?
Yeah, that's also fencing and lighting, and so we'll have to add that under the project title.
Can you specify the details for the, for the GUSD to us? Do you have that information? The soccer field at Columbus?
The scope of work for the soccer field project at Columbus and/or Wilson includes converting the natural turf to artificial turf, includes lighting and fencing and restroom buildings and parking.
It seems too high for me, for those items, for 1.3.
These are the estimates that we've developed. If we're lucky, when everything is said and done, the costs will be lower. Our experience right now is that construction costs do nothing but go up.
So if the money is, if we get lucky, so the money goes back to the new land acquisition?
Correct.
Correct.
Any remaining balance, what our recommendation would be, would go to the land acquisition for a new park.
And I don't know if my fellow commissioners agree, but when we do the breakdown, maybe one of our comments to the council is that for them to consider the elements, and whether they can think every element is that. If you could whack a million off one of these or these combined, that's a lot of money. Maybe the park, you know, I don't know, but maybe there's an element that can be limited or refined or?
I would hope, for example, GUSD would be covering the cost of the parking and the bathroom.
I have to tell you, based on our analysis, in order to make it worth a city's while to convert a school field to a public use field, it would have to be available in the evening. Otherwise, it's not worth our investment as a shared facility. The school district obviously is providing the land, and we are providing the improvements. Generally speaking, that's the, that will be the agreement and the arrangement. So given that, we would be responsible for the improvements. And we would recommend, in both cases, that these need to be lit soccer fields, they need to have their own restrooms. We wouldn't be able to access the restrooms on the school grounds because of education or safety codes, child safety codes, and they'd have to have parking. To us, those are things that are not negotiable, they have to be part of any natural turf soccer field conversion partnership with the school district.
Is there any concern that maybe it's too far ahead, that neighbors will object to lighting the fields?
Yes.
Is that something, how do you, how do you foresee dealing with that?
Well, it's something that is part of the environmental review. There will need to be hearings with the community. There may be ways that we can mitigate whatever the negative impact of that. For example, the style of lighting that we use would have to be such that the glare is primarily on the field itself, and the degree to which we can prevent the glare from going, glaring towards people's units or properties. You know, traffic's going to be a concern. We have to figure out ways to mitigate that as best we can. Noise is going to be a concern, we're going to have to mitigate that as best we can with staffing, with management, maybe being flexible on hours. You know, normally, our ball fields, including soccer fields, are You know, normally, our ball fields, including soccer fields, are open till 10:00. Maybe these don't have to be open till 10:00, maybe we can close them at 8:00 or 9:00. You know, maybe, well, we'd have to figure out ways that we can mitigate those types of impacts, but certainly, there are going to be a lot of questions as to the wisdom of implementing these projects. And that's something that both the council and the school district are going to have to, have to work through.
Have more questions?
No.
Otherwise, let's move this motion.
Yes.
One correction, because it's not review and approve. All the feedback that Jess mentioned will just be review and provide feedback, so the motion will be feedback received from the commission.
I move that, with the conditions that we've talked about.
And second?
Commissioners Asatryan?
Yes.
Fad?
Yes.
Calfayan?
Yes.
Michaels? President Wu is absent.
Okay, next item, please.
At C is a suspension policy update. At 1 is a motion to note and file the revised CSP rules and regulations. That's my report. So on December 14th, staff presented to the commission the CSP suspension policy, which was inclusive of the enforcement of rules and regulations, which establishes the progressive discipline for various levels of offense, and also CSP's rules and regulations document, which identifies a department's rules and regulations and classifies each rule under a level of offense to help determine the level of discipline when the rule is violated. Commission approved the enforcement of rules and regs, which is attached as Exhibit, as Exhibit 1, establishing the levels of discipline, and provided feedback for staff consideration on the CSP rules and regulations document, which is attached as Exhibit 2. Commission provided the following feedback for staff consideration and asked for a follow-up report. Part of the feedback received was to clarify who can issue the suspension notice, clarify the role of the private security, clarify if citizens could report a park patron who's violating the rules, review rules and clarify as necessary, and a couple of those were pointed out by various commissioners, and to continue to establish a database with PD to record the warning notices and suspension. Staff has further reviewed and refined the CSP rules and regulations per commission feedback. The changes in the CSP's rules and regulations document since the last commission meeting are highlighted in yellow in Exhibit 2, and you have the exhibits in your packet. Furthermore, staff has also attached as Exhibits 3 to 7 the various forms and internal procedure document that will be used for the suspension policy. I'm sure that you've all had an opportunity to look through the rules and regulation document, which highlights the changes since the last commission meeting. I'd be happy to go through them with you, or conclude my report and just open it up to commission questions and feedback. The report before you is a note and file, just to bring back the revisions that were done by staff.
Yeah, I think last time we did read them, and we went over it. Let's go to questions.
Under overcrowding, we had discussed that extensively at the last meeting, and not only was it not addressed, but now there's a bench that's added to it. More people than seats provided or available per table or bench. That was the discussion we had about, you know, families gathering around a table. I thought this was going to be addressed, but now it's not just the table, but we're also adding a bench around it. So again, I understand what the concerns are, but I'd like to see the rules actually specify the issue that we're trying to resolve here.
Commissioner Asatryan, we did, based on your feedback, we did review that specific rule, and we did meet with legal, and based off, and this is an existing rule that we had in our current policy, so it wasn't something new that was added. So this was in our existing policies, not to say that it's right or wrong, but I just want to mention that it has been part of the department's rules and regulations. And there is always a little bit of staff discretion, because we understand that in an instance where there is a family or a group of friends gathered around a table to sing "Happy Birthday" and/or to be looking at something, a group project, if they're using our facilities, that's not going to be an issue. I think that in order for us to be able to address some of the problem areas, which might be safety issues, we do need to have the rules and be able to specify this. We'd be happy to take another look at it with legal, but, you know, our last review, in order for us to be able to address the problem patrons, we did need to have the rule in the document.
Again, it's, I mean, it's not specifying anything about safety or the issue that you're trying to push forth. I mean, we've had this discussion during the last meeting, so I don't want to keep, you know, saying the same thing, so. Just needed to address it.
What do we need to change in there?
I'm not quite sure, but, I mean, right now, as it stands, overcrowding means that a family that is gathered around a table that allows for six people, and there are 10 people around that table, that is technically overcrowding and falls into the suspension policy. And I understand it's under discretion of the staff to be able to do that, but to implement a law or a rule that basically leaves it up to a staff member to determine whether or not they're going to use that suspension policy, I have an issue with.
You can't let, you don't want to limit it just to families.
Right, but I'm just giving an example. I understand, you know, if the issue is, you know, individuals gathering and they're loitering and whatnot, then the language of the suspension policy should address that, or whatever safety issues that you have. But as it stands now, technically, family can be removed and suspended from the park because they're overcrowding a table, or a group of friends that are not causing any safety issues.
Yes, Commissioner Protem Calfayan, we feel that we need to be able to regulate overcrowding, and we will exercise discretion. A lot of times, we, families reserve picnic areas, or benches, or pavilions for their parties, and there are certain things that we look at in terms of the number of persons that they are expecting. So if they give us a number, and we determine that, okay, this reservation, this area will accommodate that, but in reality, they've invited twice as many people, but they're trying to skirt the rules and guidelines, then that's not fair to other patrons that are also reserving parts of the park at the same time. So we need to be able to regulate overcrowdedness. And because the more overcrowded it is, it increases the chances of something going awry. So we need to have something.
I agree with you that we need to have something, but I'm not sure if this is the line that I'd like to have in here.
What's the line, so we can correct it?
The overcrowding means more people than seats provided or available per table or bench, I guess what the change is. Page 4.
Okay. You know, when we're dealing with public, it's very difficult, especially in open spaces. It's, there's a lot of violence, there is also a good part of it, people like go there and enjoy themselves with families. And how often we have encountered this kind of situation, when there was a family sitting six guests, and then there were 10 of them, we had any problems. I don't think that's an issue at this time, but we like to correct it, and let's move on, because we're running out of time. If we can have a motion to move the regulations and the rules, will be discussed this last time. I think the staff has done a good job. They have everything, all the details in here. It's a very good job.
Before we make that motion, I would like to go ahead and request a definite date as to when this would come back, the suspension policy would come back for review by the commission, to see how those rules are being implemented, if we have specific problems, and to be able to get more feedback on that.
Commissioner Protem Calfayan, Commissioner Michaels, that's an excellent suggestion. My recommendation is that we come back October 1, which is the end of the peak summer period, which is typically when we encounter these types of problems, and when the police department is very busy helping us maintain control and safety and security in the parks. So I recommend October 1 as a good time to come back with an evaluation, a report and evaluation on how the suspension policy is working out.
That's excellent.
Well, I move we, I'm not sure what the form of the wording, I move we consent to the report?
A motion to note and file the revised CSP.
Note and file the report with the idea that we revisit it around, in October.
Okay, so let's move the motion then, please.
Who's seconding?
I'll sign.
Commissioner Asatryan?
No.
Fad?
Yes.
Calfayan?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
President Wu is absent.
Next item, please.
Item 7, reports for information only. At A is 2015 Summer Aquatics Program Report.
Good afternoon, President Protem Calfayan and members of the commission. I'm Gabrielle Golian, I'm the Community Services Supervisor at the Glendale Sports Complex. My area of supervision also includes the aquatics program at the five waiting pools and at the Pacific Community Pool. I'm here today to provide you with a program evaluation of the 2015 Summer Aquatics Program. I understand it may seem a little late, as we're gearing up already for 2016. Our program actually officially runs through October, so we typically write our program evaluation after that, and with the holidays, we got pushed until now, that is why there was a delay on reporting this to you. This is a nice picture, right when we opened, of our Pacific Community Pool. It is still an incredibly popular pool. We are packed every single day when we're open. We have constant requests, and with the heatwaves, we're even getting calls right now. When is the pool open? Are you ready for us? Our program elements at the pool include recreational swimming, instructional lessons, the community swim team, a community water polo team. We have a junior lifeguard academy. We have a number of special events that we hold throughout the summer. We also are available for private party rentals, and we have five waiting pools that are available for drop-by participation for free, as well as private rentals. Our program this past summer ran from Memorial Day, May 25th, through September 27th, 2015. The full program with lessons and extended hours during the Glendale Unified School Break, which was the second week of June through the second week of August. And then in September, we're also open for weekends, that's after Labor Day all the way through the end of September. We do have reduced programming from Memorial Day through the school break, and then again, once school is back in session, we reduce back down. So we don't offer as many swimming lessons during that time, and our recreation swim is limited. During non-operational hours, which is, or months, actually, which is the winter months, we do winterize the pool. We put a semi-permanent cover over the pool. This is required by the Health Department. We can't just put thermal covers over the pool in the winter, because we don't have a lifeguard on duty all the time. So we do cover them with a hard cover. The advertisements of our cover say an elephant could stand on it, but we have never tested that theory. We have had a couple of requests to stay open year-round. The cost right now is prohibitive of that. We do keep a list of everybody who's requesting to rent the pool during the winter months, and if we ever get a list that's great enough of interested parties, we may come back and revisit staying open, but right now, with the number of people interested, the cost to rent it for them would just be too high, so.
Not heated, is it?
It is heated.
Okay.
It is, yes. So we could keep it open, but the cost is very high. We have five waiting pools, one at Brand Park, Palmer Park, Glen Oaks Park, Dunsmore Park, and Fremont Park. During the Glendale Unified School District Summer Break, two pools are open every weekday from 12 noon to 5 p.m. In 2016, Palmer Waiting Pool will be closed for renovation, and we are also going to be opening each pool one weekend day and one weekday, instead of two weekdays. And we're doing this in order to make the waiting pools more accessible to working These are both our recreational swim fees and also our lap swim fees. This is just an entry fee. It ranges from free for small children up to $3 per day for adults. And we also make a pass available, so for anywhere from $20 to $75, individuals can purchase a pass that allows them to enter as many times as they want during any program for the summer. Our recreational swim program is offered afternoons, weekdays, and then mid-morning through evening on Saturdays and Sundays. Our average daily attendance during Glendale Unified School District Break in 2015 was 156 people a day, and in that pool, that is a lot of people. That includes our camps that are coming to visit, both city-run camps as well as private rental camps, and just regular drop-by participants from the neighborhood. We had about 16,000 entries during the summer of 2015. It's a very popular pool. Our youth lessons and adult lessons are offered throughout the summer. We start, it's offered in conjunction with the GUSD break, $40 for a two-week class for youth, or 55 for adults. A youth class, or actually either class, we either offer Monday through Thursday classes for two weeks, so that's eight classes for 25 minutes each, or we offer Friday, Saturday, Sunday classes. They get six classes that are 35 minutes each for that price. And classes are for all ages. We start with Parent &amp; Me for anyone over six months old with their parent, all the way up through advanced youth and adults. We had 2,742 enrollees in our swim lesson program in 2015. A lot of these are duplicate students, but that's how many registrations we had. Average class size is seven to 10 students. We don't go over 10 students, most of our classes are about seven students. We offered classes for just shy of 2,742. We were overfilled, so we did provide extra staff in order to teach those classes. Any class that has over seven students, we do provide an extra staff person for. And we also had a junior lifeguard academy with two sessions, and we had 22 students in that. Our community swim team and community water polo team are very popular. We had 102 participants in the swim team, and we actually have to cap it at 100, due to time restraints on when they can practice, because the pools are just so filled. And the water polo team had 42 participants. Each program costs $75 per person to participate throughout the summer, and both programs are supported by LA84 grant money. So that's some of the funding that's left over from the 84 Olympics.
And anybody who wants to participate, there's no ability restriction?
There is one ability restriction, Commissioner Fad, it's that they do have to be able to swim unassisted, but there's not a competition to get into the teams. We don't have any kind of tryouts, other than just being able to swim. For swim team, they have to be able to swim the length of the pool unassisted, and for water polo, they do have to be able to tread water. These programs, we do have practices throughout the week on weekdays, and we have meets and championship meets through SMAF and LA84 at the end of the summer. So the kids get to have healthy competition, as well as learning and team camaraderie Our waiting pools are utilized by children under eight years of age. The pool is free during those open hours, which in 2015 was our weekdays, and then they were available for private rentals when they weren't scheduled open to the public. In 2015, there were 139 private rentals, and we generated over $25,000 in revenues. And those are my two kids at a waiting pool rental from someone else who invited us. So they're used by everyone. We even enjoy them. The aquatics program is supported by both the general fund and the enterprise fund for revenue, or for expenses and revenues. This represents only the enterprise fund revenues that came in for the pool itself. This does not include the $25,000 for waiting pool rentals. We brought in money for recreational swim, swim lessons, swim team and water polo registration, concession sales, that includes goggles and caps and swim diapers at the front counter, LA84 grant money, and. caps and swim diapers at the front counter, LA-84 grant money, and as you can see, swim lessons are by far our largest revenue generator, even at $40 a session. I am happy to answer any questions to my guests.
Any commissioners have a question?
No, very good.
The pool is heated all year round?
Well, we turn off the heater when it's covered and winterized in order to save on gas and expenses. And then during the summer, we keep it set at approximately 82 degrees. So depending on how hot the summer is, sometimes the heater doesn't need to be turned on at all. Sometimes it's too warm. We even get complaints from people.
Is there demand on the exceptional weather during the winter, like we're going through, on the weekends at least?
Yes.
Is that something to consider?
Yes. We do certainly get a lot of requests for it when it's warm. The challenge is that due to the Health Department, once we bring the pool open, even for just a weekend, we have to circulate the pumps and keep the chemicals at a certain ratio to the water at all times. So the cost becomes very, very high in order to open, even just for a weekend.
So it's not practical, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, next item.
Thank you.
At B is Glendale Youth Alliance Summer Youth Employment Program.
Good afternoon. My name's Karina Gregorian. I'm the Community Development Supervisor. I oversee the programs of the Glendale Youth Alliance. As you may know, Glendale Youth Alliance is a nonprofit organization that operates within the city of Glendale, housed in the Community Services and Parks Department. Our mission is to provide youth employment programs and activities for our local youth. Currently, we operate five programs, two of which are revenue generating programs, and three are grant-funded programs. We serve on an annual basis anywhere from 350 youth to 500 youth, depending on the funding levels. This year, due to the change in the federal funding, our focus has become more of the older youth, 18 to 24-year-olds that are not attending school or working. There's a huge push nationwide to serve the older population and get them on the right path of employment. I'm here to talk about the Summer Youth Employment Program today. This is actually for the older youth. So if there are youth or parents of older youth that are watching and would like employment opportunities for their kids, please call us. We'd be happy to serve them. As far as our Summer Youth Employment Program, this is for the 2015 Summer Youth Employment. We did receive funding from Los Angeles County Community and Senior Services. The funding was for $230,000, and we served 141 youth with these funds. Funding went into effect July 1, and it's actually the entire year, June 30, but we were encouraged to use up all the funds by December 31. Youth received 20 hours of personal enrichment training, as well as 100 hours of work experience, earning $9 an hour. In addition, we received $72,000 from different departments within the city of Glendale to employ 48 youth to do brush clearance, to prevent fires on our local hillsides. In December of 2015, Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors did approve additional $6 million for youth employment activities. Of that, GYA's allocation was $110,000. We just received the official notice a few weeks ago, and we will be serving an additional 52 youth starting March of this year, March to June of this fiscal year. For the first time this year, we also applied for funding through Los Angeles Probation Department. We applied for our $50,000 grant, and I'm very excited to announce that we were awarded that grant. We will be serving 30 additional youth from June to August of the summer in 2016, and we are anticipating additional funds from Los Angeles County, the regular funding from communities and senior services. This is the youth from our summer brush program last year, 2015. Some of the components of our summer training program consisted of career exploration, life skills, work ethics, and financial literacy. We want the youth to get as much training as possible to make the right decisions for the future. Some of the service we provide are client-centered, goal-oriented case management, of course, paid work experience, scholarships, training, supportive services based on individual needs, and referrals to other resources within the community. We work very closely with a lot of the community-based organizations. The youth that we serve are generally between the ages of 14 to 24. Previously, the summer programs were focused on younger youth, 14 to 18. Through the years, that age went up to 21, and now it's up to 24. Most of the youth in our program are from low-income, disadvantaged families. They're immigrants. Some of the youth are homeless or on the verge of being homeless. They have disabilities. Foster youth, probation youth do get priority in our programs. Some of the youth are young parents, and some are the sole providers within their household. 60% of the youth in our program do indicate that they heard about us through word of mouth, so through siblings, friends, so forth. Similar to other parks programs, GYA improves the quality of life of our youth and the families by providing summer and year-round employment opportunities. Youth are off the streets in a positive environment. GYA youth also assist with maintaining the trails and perform brush clearance. Grant youth provide much-needed assistance in various sections of community services and parks, whether it's the summer recreational programs or any of the other programs offered by the parks. Youth become productive members of the workforce, breaking the cycle of poverty, which is our main goal. And I just wanted to take this opportunity and invite you to our upcoming golf tournament fundraiser, which will be held May 16 at La Cañada Country Club. And we'll have more information on our website. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go to the next item, should we leave it for next time, since we're running out of time, or we want to continue?
Mr. President, Protem Kalfiyan, members of the commission, yeah, I was going to suggest, since the next agenda item is comprised of monthly activity reports, that unless you have questions, these are primarily to update you on the main activities in the four main sections of the department. So we don't have to give reports on those, only if you have questions.
I'd like to read it into the record, if you don't mind. At C are the monthly activity reports. At 1, it's the workforce development, 2, human services, 3, recreation and community services, and 4, park services.
I'm okay just with Agnion.
Okay, then we'll postpone it next time, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.